Good morning and welcome. I'd like to call our April 18th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We have a lot of exciting things to share with you today. It's very echoey. Okay, we'll see if we can work on that. It sounds better already. This morning, we're going to start with an invocation by Pastor Aaron Mead from the Higher Purpose Pentecostal Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Stephen Elliott. And when the pledge is done, I'd ask you to sit, and Mr. Elliott will share a little bit about his illustrious career. If you could all please stand. Pastor, good morning.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and give this invocation. I had just a couple of words here before we offer up our prayer. I recently was working in Fort Pierce at a job, and my, the person working with me, something had happened. She got very excited, very exuberantly shouted out, "Thank you, God." And it just happened to be that, at that moment, an officer from the Fort Pierce Police Department walked in, whose name was Gaz, with a Z. And when he walked over, he, he's, he's, he's a friend of mine, he's very funny. He said, "No, it's thank you Gaz, Gaz," with a Z. And it reminded me that, though I would never want to give Thanksgiving due to my God, to anyone else, that our public officials and those who sit in positions of authority also deserve thanks. And I want to take a moment right now to thank you for your time, that you spend, your commitment, and all that you do for our county. The Bible tells us to give honor where honor is due. That's what Paul said in the Book of Romans. He also tells us that we must honor and respect those who are in public positions of authority. So by your position alone, you are due that honor and that respect. Scripture tells us as well, though, to give double honor to those who serve well. So by your position, you are due that honor and respect; by how you hold that position, you're due double honor and respect. So today, as I offer up a prayer, I just want to offer up a Thanksgiving to God, but also to you, and ask the Lord to bless you. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for this time together. We thank you for all the business that is about to go on in this meeting. We pray that you would bless this meeting and bless these officials. Allow them, Lord God, to feel that sense of honor and respect in this place. And every public comment, everything, all the business being done today, let it be due with that honor and that respect. We thank you, Jesus. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Good morning. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, good morning. It's a pleasure to have you.
Oh, good morning.
Pastor, thank you very much for your invocation. It was excellent. Sir, why don't you share a little bit about your, your history and your career? Please.
I guess I'll start at age 18. I'll try and keep it short.
Okay.
I was a, a youth back in the early 70s, heading in the wrong direction. I was a high school dropout. And I had a chance meeting with an individual who mentored me into joining the U.S. Army. And when that was suggested to me, I thought of one thing: combat with Vic Morrell. That used to be my favorite show, growing up as a little kid in, in grade school. And I says, "Well, that's what I'm gonna do." So I joined the U.S. Army. Upon joining, completed basic training, and immediately felt, geez, I've accomplished something. I went on to do advanced training, graduated, signed to Germany. Upon arriving to Germany, I was mentored into completing high school. After three years, I made a decision that was gonna be my career. During my career, I served four tours in Germany during the Cold War. I served as First Sergeant in the Gulf War of 1991. And I was back in Germany on my last assignment, and I was, I thought about it, and I said, I decided to retire. At 20 years. During that time, I was mentored into becoming the Distinguished Honor Graduate of Non-Commissioned Officers Academy. And I was ready to go get a part-time job and supplement my military retirement check. But my commander, who I was pretty close with, he had other ideas. And he sat me down, and he goes, "I've looked, you have the Vietnam-era GI Bill. I'm not gonna sign your paperwork till you promise me you're gonna go to college." I kinda went, mm, all right, I guess I'll do that, you know? Off I went. Pennsylawa Junior College, arrived, went in the bookstore, and was mentored by the lady behind the counter to buy a book called How to Be a Stray Day Student. I went, well, better buy that book. I graduated Pennsylawa Junior College with a 3.74 GPA, and I, I'm ready to go to work, ready to go to work, supplement my military retirement. Some other individuals had a different idea. My finance professor, my philosophy professor, they took me to lunch and said, "You got two more years. You need to go up to the university and get your bachelor's degree. You don't want to be an assistant manager, do you?" And I, no. Off I went. UWF, mentored by a couple individuals there. Graduated Golden Key National Honor Society, received my BSBA in finance, joined the Edward Jones Investment Firm in 97. Had a wonderful 20-year career, retired as a limited partner. And upon retirement, I'd always been a member of the Elks Lodge, Elks, 48-year member. And I was mentored that, you know, things went pretty good in retirement. If you're able, you should have some give back. I became the Veterans Chairman. In the last six years, my main focus has been on the Army of Hope Charity, a charity formed by the Florida Elks to benefit the families of deceased, disabled, deployed service members in the state of Florida when a short-term financial emergency arises. And thanks to a whole lot of people that were very helpful, over the last six years, we've raised over $40,000 for that meaningful charity. And, well, here it is today, and I'm standing here. Any questions?
Well, that is a fantastic career, and we thank you for your service.
And I would, one last comment. One of the most underutilized aspects of our society is mentorship. Whether it's a mentorship moment or a formal mentorship program, if you think about my short history that I've discussed with you this morning, where would I be without a few of those mentorship moments in my lifetime? So I'd just like to ask everybody, if you see someone that needs a little kick in the butt, don't be afraid to give a members, mentorship moment. You never know what might happen from that. Thank you again so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we have a couple of housekeeping issues. We have a couple of additional items. Consent Agenda Number Nine, an adoption of, adopt a proclamation declaring human trafficking awareness in Martin County, Florida. Consent Number 10, adopt a proclamation declaring Memorial Day in Martin County, Florida. Consent Number 11, adopt a proclamation declaring Historic Preservation Month in Martin County, Florida, in honor of a, a treasure in Martin County, Ms. Alice LaCard. We also have no consent polls. We have one request to withdraw Departmental Number Three, the 2023 Legislative Program Update, and one request to continue Public Hearing Quasi-Judicial Number Two, the Rolling Sands will be continued. Do we have a date for that, Mr. Donaldson?
No, we do. We do not have a date. They will be required to re-advertise in accordance with recent rulings.
Thank you. So if anyone's here to, to talk or to hear about the Rolling Sands Project, Public Hearing Quasi-Judicial Number Two, we will not be hearing that later today. And with that, Commissioner Smith.
We approve of the agenda with the additional three items for the Consent Agenda, Consent Item Number Nine, 10, and 11, request to withdraw Department Three, and the continuance of re-advertising of Public Hearing Quasi-Judicial Item Number Two, which is the Rolling Sands item.
Well done. Thank you, sir.
Seconded that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to accept the agenda as presented, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations that we will be giving out this morning and honoring organizations and individuals. And as usual, we have Ms. Laura Boprey here to do a remarkable job of presenting these proclamations. Ms. Boprey, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Our first proclamation is declaring Hurricane Preparedness Week in Martin County. The 2023 hurricane season begins on June 1st, and as a coastal county, Martin County is extremely vulnerable to storm surge, tornadoes, flooding, and high winds. Weather hurricane forecasters have predicted an average, above-average, or below-average season. It just takes one storm to have a bad year. In recognition of Hurricane Preparedness Week, April 30th through May 1st, the Board urges the cooperation of municipalities, businesses, homeowners, and condominium associations, hotel associations, and all media in their efforts to inform residents and visitors of appropriate awareness, preparedness, and safety measures related to hurricane season. And here to accept, we have Sally Waite, our Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss Hurricane Preparedness Week, as we want to encourage everyone to evaluate their personal hurricane risk before hurricane season on, on June 1st. After experiencing firsthand the devastation that occurred on the West Coast, I feel compelled to stress the importance of hurricane preparedness. So now, of course, is the time to be preparing. Please make a plan to make sure that it includes where you will go if you're evacuated. Remember that shelters should be your last resort. And if you are traveling to a safe location, to go tens of miles and not hundreds of miles. Some additional reminders, you know, make sure you build a kit. We tell you this every year. Know your risk. Know if you live in an evacuation zone. You can get all that information in our, on our website or our Hurricane Preparedness Guide. Also, this year, we're using Connect Martin app. This app, you will be able to download on your phone and get information, current information on open shelters if we have an active incident. Also, we are working on, with the Office of Communications, a way for residents to assess their damage by sending us pictures that will come right into the Emergency Operations Center, so we can know where to send resources and damage assessment teams right away. So a lot has been happening since, especially coming back from the West Coast and learning so much about what happened there. So please remember that regardless of the hurricane, like Laura said, the hurricane predictions, it only takes one storm to change a community and lives, you know, lives forever by the impact of a storm. So be prepared. Don't be a hurricane, be a hurricane survivor and not a victim. Thank you.
Excellent.
Libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community and strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. In observance of National Library Week, April 23rd through the 29th, the Board encourages all residents to visit their local library to explore the wealth of resources available. And here to accept, we have Jennifer Salas, our Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Our residents create their own stories at our libraries, so whether that is them researching their genealogy, finding a new author to read, shaking their sillies out at storytime, or learning English or gaining their citizenship, we offer something for everyone. So we thank you for celebrating National Library Week next week. We will also be celebrating National Library Workers' Day next Tuesday and appreciating over 200 volunteers that our library relies on to develop the services and implement them that we have. So it's a collaboration of our Friends of the Library, our Library Foundation, our Board of Trustees, our Commissioners, and all of our residents. So thank you so much.
Our next proclamation is declaring May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Martin County, Florida.
As Commissioner Campy said, May 2023 is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month, and mental health of, and the men, ugh, excuse me, and the mental health of every Martin County resident is a critical factor in our community's emotional and economic stability. Stigma remains the primary obstacle to getting help, and as community leaders, we must prepare for an increase in demand in services through education, outreach, and greater access to care. As leaders, the Board continues working to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health, as we strive to be a community which supports mental wellness by providing greater, greater access to treatment, increasing tools and resources for our residents, and supporting citizens with mental health opportunities. And here to accept, we have Michelle Miller, Human Services Administrator, along with Yori Paraga, Case Management Coordinator, and Catherine Kennedy, Project Coordinator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. This month was established as Mental Health Awareness Month in 1949 as a way to increase awareness on the importance of mental health and wellness. According to a recent report by U.S. News, 14% of Martin County residents suffer from frequent mental distress. The good news is this is a bit below the state average, which is 15.4, and the national average, which is 15.8. Here in Human Services, we're doing several things to help bring awareness to our community. Here with me today is Catherine Kennedy. She is our Project Coordinator for our Mental Health Awareness Grant. This grant allows us to offer the community free training on mental health, first aid, and other mental health awareness issues. Also here with me today is Yori Paraga. She is our Court Case Manager, and she works diligently with those suffering from mental health issues to divert them from the criminal justice system. Finally, we want to recognize several of our community partners that also provide necessary services in our community. One here with us today is Suncoast Community Health Center. And Suncoast is celebrating 25 years of serving the community and promoting mental wellness through outreach, advocacy, education, and collaboration. And thank you again for this proclamation.
Only one more. Honoring Nurses Week in Martin County, Florida.
Registered nurses constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, and the depth and breadth of the profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, including the frontline of the pandemic. In recognition of May 6th through 12th as Nurses Week, the Board asks residents of Martin County to honor and celebrate registered nurses' accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show our appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during this month, but at every opportunity throughout the year. And here to accept, we have Cynthia Tagliaferri, Southeast Region Director, Florida Atlantic University, Christine Elin, College of Nursing.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
And good morning, Commissioner Campy and fellow Commissioners. Every year, from May 6th to May 12th, well, May 6th is Florence Nightingale's birthday, and so May 12th is designated as Nurses Week. And National Nurses Week celebrates and acknowledges nurses and their tireless dedication that they give to patients to feel safe and comfortable. This year, 2023, the theme for nurses is "You Make a Difference." This was selected to encourage nurses, individuals, employers, and other healthcare professionals and community leaders such as yourselves to recognize and promote the vast contributions and positive impact of the Americas 2.5 million nurses. Florida ranks among the highest with about 187,920 nurses, and in Martin County alone, we have over 2,200 nurses. They are essential to every healthcare setting, hospitals, nursing homes, ambulatory centers, and patients' homes. 75% of them actively worked on the front lines during the COVID pandemic, making a difference. The very core of nursing, caring for patients at the bedside, remains unchanged. Nurses bring a special compassion and concern for the patient as well as the patient's families. They hold steadfast to that special covenant with the people of Florida and play a vital role in educating people on preventing illness and promoting health wellness. Nurses are essential to not only every healthcare setting, but to every person's health. Joining me today are my fellow nurses. And I'd like to also include and make mention of Dr. Patty Gagliano. She is the Dean of the Indian River State College School of Nursing, who's committed to growing our profession in this community to better serve Martin County. Together, we all thank you for this honor today, and thank you very much.
I'd rather wear my Apple Watch.
you know, organizes the people to come here, then takes the photographs. Yes, that's a presentation. And then also takes all the photographs. So thank you, Laura, very much. We have one more proclamation that will be a little bit more of a presentation. It is Proclamation Number Two, the Florida Faith Alliance Unite to Fight Child Sex Trafficking Presentation by my friend, Pastor, and most of our friends, Pastor Lynn Barletta, Senior Pastor of the Visionary Church. Lynn and I have been friends for a long time. She and her husband, Tony, and her team have been really shining a very important light on this tragic, on this terrible scourge that most people think is happening somewhere else. But sadly, it happens right here in our community as well. And the last time I had the pleasure, the somber pleasure of listening to Lynn and her team make a presentation, I thought that the information was so important and relevant for our residents to hear. I, I asked and invited Lynn to come, and I appreciate you very much coming, all that you've done. It's obviously a very difficult topic to, for you to have to delve into, but knowing you as a godly woman, I know that you're the perfect person to do it. So please, welcome.
Thank you so much, Chair Campy and Martin County Commissioners. I am Lynn Barletta, founder of Catch the Wave of Hope, Visionary Church, also Visionary School of Arts. And I thank you so much for displaying our children's artwork here and being such a proponent of the arts in Martin County. So most recently, I have formed and founded Florida Faith Alliance. I was the face on South Florida News for three years, from 2016 to 2019, to bring awareness as a human trafficking expert. And I worked directly with traffic victims for two years, developing an art restoration curriculum for them at Martin Girls Academy. I was able to help also our Martin County school system with its first anti-trafficking video that included my "Don't Take the Bait" program for middle school and high school. And I do have members of FFA today here, two presenters, and so glad they're here with me. And we're here in Martin County because we are in a crisis for our children. And I believe that addressing this crisis with our government leaders is one of the keys to begin to solve it through awareness and action. And of course, I am talking about human trafficking. For adults, human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery in which traffickers use force, fraud, or coercion to control their victims for the purpose of engaging in commercial sex acts. Any commercial sex act against a child of any kind, even trading a meal for sex, is a serious trafficking crime, and no force or fraud has to be proven. Labor trafficking and sex trafficking often overlap. Victims forced to work both day and night, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Average age of girls in our nation for entry into sex trafficking is getting younger now. Now it's down to ages 12 to 14. Average age of boys is 11. Before the pandemic, human trafficking was the third-largest crime economy in the world. But since the pandemic, it has become the second-largest crime economy in the world, second only to drugs. And according to the 2022 Summit of the Florida Human Trafficking Alliance, which was formed by our state legislators, overseen by our Attorney General Ashley Moody and her state counsel, most of the information I'm sharing with you has come from their recent 15-hour training summit. The demand for sex is now rampant, making the selling of humans a multibillion-dollar global market. America is the biggest buyer of sex in the world. Florida is number three in the nation for hotline calls. The demand for younger and younger children is increasing as child porn increases in younger ages and violence. Kidnapping a child off the street is not as prevalent now as the subtle, devious approaches used by predators and traffickers to groom a child and bait that child so they come to them voluntarily. The growing trend now is trafficking children after school, before they go home to their families, or families trafficking their own children. Sex trafficking is in every state, and it is in every community. And the spread of COVID-19 has had an unprecedented effect on every aspect of our lives, as we know. But human trafficking, specifically child sexual exploitation online, is no exception. According to an Interpol 2022 report, there has been a frightening increase worldwide. The National Center for Missing and Exploited Children has reported a 98.66 increase in America in reports of online sexual solicitation that has gone up since 2020. 95% of American teens have access to a smartphone, and most trafficking solicitations take place online. Female users between the ages of 10 and 19 make up TikTok's largest demographic, and now TikTok has overtaken YouTube in views, where traffickers are constantly recruiting children. Over 80% of all prosecutions now involve online recruitment. Sex extortion, that is selling sex through videos and photos online and threatening child victims, is the fastest-growing aspect of trafficking, and it is a gateway to physical trafficking. Sex extortion has greatly multiplied also since the pandemic. The Department of Justice has identified children as the fastest-growing target of domestic trafficking, with an increase of 98% since the pandemic. So children are the number-one target in the earth today, both in our community and in the world. Homeland Security connects extortion and domestic trafficking with gangs such as the cartel that are sending recruiters into all of our public schools. Recruiters are now forming sexting rings, and they begin sextortion, and they're paid with cyber money or gift cards that cannot be traced. Victims can be located then through GPS coordinates and face recognition. They're very, very techie. This horror is happening right here in Martin County. And as of December 2022, there have been four arrests, one Martin County- one Martin County high school coach arrested for paying for photos for teens, two men arrested for luring children into their van, and one woman arrested involving a trafficking ring. I personally worked with Florida House Representative Toby Oviedo for this year, and he recently presented Bill 7045 to make businesses, hotels, motels, porn theaters, sex businesses liable for not taking precautions or for enabling human trafficking through their business. Thus far, this bill has passed unopposed and recently went through the Appropriations Committee just a week ago. So, I know that you will join us in sending that message to our businesses in our community here. And I will bring even more information on new bills that are coming when we present for a proclamation with Catch the Wave of Hope on May 9th. So, as I said, we're in a crisis. And in our county, it is crucial to bring awareness to every child, equip every parent, every teacher, every citizen. Florida Faith Alliance, along with a new subsidiary called Florida Educators Alliance, is committed to bringing that awareness with 10 presenter teams that I have personally trained and are ready to go into churches, synagogues, and schools. We have set up liaisons with sheriffs and Homeland Security all over the Treasure Coast to turn in tips and for arrests and rescues as they come in. And we recently turned in a tip that helped to track down the predator that was luring children into vans in Martin County. I brought to you our brochure, which clearly states how to recognize the signs of human trafficking in an individual, as well as recognizing a home or a business that might be a location where victims are being trafficked. And our approach is that if you see something, say something. And if you want to process a tip, you can contact us directly, and we will help you process that and turn in that tip. All of the hotlines are published in the brochure, as well as our own text and hotline number. And we can instantly text the detective assigned to our area who is the human trafficking export. And, you know, this has been working well for some time. In 2017, I turned in a tip that resulted in a bust at Golden Gate after an awareness training that we did in a local church. And our own sheriff broke up this huge ring that was both in Martin County, Lake Worth, and then all the way around back to Indian Town, from Stewart, Lake Worth, and Indian Town. Hundreds of people were using these women and children, and they were rescued. So, we want to empower people everywhere to stand up and say, "Not on my watch." And we are currently bringing on an executive director who was a former educator. She'll be coordinating our county, as well as the state of Florida, working with schools, law enforcement, government, and faith organizations. And we believe that an anti-trafficking campaign can be launched right here in our community. It can multiply into other communities through awareness, postings on social media, published material, awareness trainings that could take place in government and county buildings. I believe with all my heart and schools, we can do this if we work together. And this is where we unite. This is where we cross party lines. This is where we cross racial lines. This is where we unite together to fight. Because I don't want to wait for Human Trafficking Awareness Month to come in January. We are in this crisis right now. And we want to empower you, as commissioners, to stand guard with awareness and take a lead role in protecting our community and our children in this travesty. So, I have a couple of minutes left, and I want to thank you for allowing me to come and do this. Do you have any questions? Would you like to ask me? I'll try to do my best to answer your questions in the few moments that we have.
Lynn, thank you so much. Can you give out the information on how people can reach you and the organization?
Yes, the number is, hold on just a moment. You can text us directly at 888-670-4638. Or you can call that number, and it comes right into Florida Faith Alliance. And if it's a viable tip and we can work with you on making sure we have all the information, we'll get that information immediately to our liaison. And there are also, you can also text HELPTOBEFREE at 233-733. That's the national hotline. You can also call 911, which is the sheriff's department. Recognize the signs, that's important. And even if it doesn't seem like a big sign, it may be worth turning in. It just might save a life.
And then also, this is for people that are noticing things, but your organization is also aiding victims as well. So, what do you have to say for folks that might find themselves a victim?
Catch the Wave of Hope does offer therapy to victims. And we refer any victims that come our way or the sheriff's department lets us know about to Catch the Wave of Hope for that specific therapy. Ultimately, there is a long-term plan to build a home for trafficked children, but we must deal with the crisis situation that we have at hand right here.
Thank you. My colleagues have questions? I have a couple more.
By all means.
Parents, you know, I know that, first off, there's no age minimum or maximum for this kind of issue, correct?
We're talking as young as toddlers here. And this is what is being promoted online at porn websites.
And as old as?
Adults, but most adults enter this life as a child. And the average life expectancy is only about seven years.
Parents that think their children are home safe in the house. You mentioned a little bit about the internet and cellphones. What can parents be looking for? You know, they think, hey, my kid's not at the mall. My kid's not hanging out after school. They're upstairs, they're doing their homework. But meanwhile, they're being preyed upon via the telephone or Snapchat or Instagram, any of the social media platforms. What kind of telltale signs can parents look for from a child, boy or girl, that might have been, you know, somehow snared into the process? What telltale signs should parents be thinking about?
Well, there's usually a shame demeanor. They can't look you in the eye. They begin to withdraw from family and friends. There's a definite difference in their persona. And there just seems to be something that is wrong. And I tell people, pay attention to that inner compass that you have when you're sensing that something's going on with a child, especially your own child. But what we're also telling parents is that it's very important to get NetNanny or Bark or some of these newer technology systems that will enable you to know every place your child has been online and all the texts that they receive. That is not an invasion of your child's privacy. That is taking responsibility as a parent to protect your children.
I think that's important to repeat because a lot of times when, you know, whether it's the tracking someone's phone, cellphone, or, you know, Find My Friends, Find My Phone, or those things, the kids, the children, take on a position that somehow they're being punished or the parents are being overly, not even protective. I don't think they think of it as protection, overly intrusive. And so, you know, to finish, what advice do you give parents to make that conversation where the parent needs to explain to their children that this is not, like, you're not being punished? We are, look, I'm sure all of us feel, our number-one priority as parents is to protect our children. And there's so many, you know, we all think we know how to protect our children, but there's these new and improved snares for monsters to find them. You know, what's the proper dialogue for that?
Well, I think communication without judgment is number one. To be able to start these communications with your children and sit down and have talks, and hopefully, that could be at a family dinner, which is a rapidly disappearing event in America. But when you can sit down as a family and you can really talk about these things. And children, teenagers, tend to say, oh, I know all about that. You know, they'll kind of poo-poo the idea. But I think continued, just really seeking to communicate with your children and to talk about these issues, and maybe bring them to an awareness training. Give them information that comes from more than just the parent. And we're developing a program that can go into youth groups, that can go into organizations, and it's just a specific program called "Don't Take the Bait", which teaches children the methods and approaches of traffickers to groom. And you know children are being groomed. You know children are being groomed everywhere you turn nowadays. The ultimate goal is trafficking. It's a follow-the-money thing.
I appreciate that so much. Thank you for everything that you've been doing, your team, your husband. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lynn has brochures here for anybody in the room that would like, you know, if you heard this presentation this morning, whether you were here in person or you're watching, please share this information. I think there's plenty of parents that would be absolutely shocked that this kind of thing is happening, but more importantly, that this kind of thing is happening right here. Okay, we will now turn it to public comment. We have two at this point. If there's anyone else that would like to address us either on a topic that we'll be sharing as an agenda item later or on any topic that they'd like, you can ask our bailiff to fill out one of these forms. But you can speak ahead of time and fill the form out afterwards. You'll have three minutes to address us on the topics. At the 2 minute and 45-second point, you're going to hear a tone. That doesn't mean you have to stop. That just means that you'll have 15 seconds to wrap up your comments. Our first request to speak for him this morning is from Mr. Lawrence Leeb. Or is that L-E-E-B or L-E-R-B?
L-E-E-B.
Mr. Leeb, welcome, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, citizens of Martin County. The reason I'm here is to talk about an issue with our building and zoning people. And it involves a state law that states that when you report a code violation, you must leave your personal information in order for them to come out and deal with it. Well, I wrote down a little comment about that, and I want to share it with you. And here it goes. I've recently tried to report several code violations to the Building and Zoning Department. However, they say that a person must give personal information to them before they will go and enforce the laws concerning illegal renting, storage, and building hazards. I don't know about all of you, but I was threatened, as well as my wife and pets, because I helped Martin County Sheriff's Department put some bad people away a number of years ago. It is my opinion that people's personal information that winds up a public record is not necessary for code enforcement to enforce the code. The law has been changed to require this. Why? I don't want to be a target for revenge, as I have before. My name's Lawrence Leeb, and that's a statement I have. What I'd like to maybe see happen, because I've been in contact with Sarah and her assistant, Sarah, and I've already got a copy of the law. I would like for you Commissioners to maybe talk it over with one another. And Sarah knows a little bit more than I'm going to say this morning, because I don't want to bore you people. But I've got one living right next door to me. The guy came out and wrote up a code violation, and they cleaned up the property a little bit. They moved the illegal rental unit closer to their mobile home, which I requested, it was right on my fence line. But since, before and since, they illegally ran a sewer line up under into the house sewer, which is illegal, and it's not a license plover. And the people that occupy this rental or this dwelling, it's a motor home. I've got pictures if anybody wants to look. We don't know who they are. They're dropped off at dusk or so every night. It's one girl. She's dropped off, picked up the next morning, and west away to work. She's got, so we don't know, she's probably, there's probably nothing wrong with her.
No, you have more time.
Okay. There's probably nothing wrong with her, but in light of the speech that we just had by the human trafficking, now, I don't think that's going on.
But you don't know.
Since this unit has been there, and the zoning guy came out one time, they did a little, but they hooked it up again. And I called him, and he said he couldn't come out again because of the law.
His time is up. Thank you. Stay there, sir. Commissioner Jenkins?
So, this actually is interesting because in the last couple of weeks, I'm dealing with two different issues in Hope Sound. And the people who approached me were apprehensive to do a thing. So, is this a state law? So, it's nothing, we can, well, that...
I have the statute.
It is a state law, and it was a change a few years ago. So, we're bound by it.
It's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah.
So, Sarah. Sarah, she's...
Now, we, may I make a suggestion? We don't normally like to engage back and forth with public comment. But what I would like to say, sir, is I think most of us and the people that are listening don't disagree with you. Sometimes there are crazy laws. But what I will request of our legal department is to have, not necessarily an agenda item, but if at our next meeting, you could give us a sort of an explanation of what that law is, why that law. There must be some rationale that they think, because I agree. I mean, it's one thing to live next to someone that's creating, or near someone that's creating a nuisance. It's another thing to fear that person for having said something that you're entitled to. I have that. What, sir, in your particular case, by reaching out to your commissioner or their staff, allows the commissioner and the staff to approach our staff so that you don't have to necessarily go to quote-unquote "war" with a neighbor? We are your representatives. Folks that are hearing this here in the room or at home, if you have an issue and you fear by saying something could cause an issue, and yes, you're right, the information is a public record. And if the person is aggressive enough, they could very easily find out who it is. And no one needs to create that. Why that law? I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a legislator at the state level. I don't know why that was put into law. But at our next meeting, we'll have a presentation on the background of that. But in the meantime, I would tell you, I'm sure all of our commissioner, my commissioner colleagues, have no problem taking calls from constituents about issues like that. We can bring it to our staff and keep the people potentially shielded, their identity shielded from. But look, if you have a crazy situation in your neighborhood, the calls that requires you to contact your county government, you have no idea what else that person potentially could be capable of. So, we thank you for bringing it to our attention. We try not to go back and forth. You can come again when we do it next time. But I mean, your point is well-taken this morning, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Hurd?
Thanks, Commissioners. I'm glad that it's coming back. I feel terrible for Mr. Leeb, feeling the real threat of retaliation.
Yes, thank you.
We need to fix it.
We got you. Well taken, sir. Next meeting, we will have a presentation on it. And you're more than welcome to come again, to speak again. Thank you. So, you'll have to discuss that afterwards. We're still in the meeting. Thank you, that's okay. I know you're passionate about it, and we are with you. Our next request to speak for him is Mr. Tom Pine. Good morning, Sarah, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tom Pine. I present live in Jensen Beach. I've been a resident in Martin County for over 50 years. Once again, hidden the consent agenda, the county slush fund, $22,42,673.21 spent between March 21st and April 3rd of 2023, without identifying the payees or the purpose of the payments. According to our Martin County government, a consent agenda, these items are considered routine and enacted in one motion. Democracy dies in darkness. There was some good news coming out of Martin County. A new water quality project to lessen the pollution entering the St. Lucie River. The first phase of the East Fork Greek Stormwater Treatment Area is being built along US 1 between Constitution Boulevard and southwest Heritage Boulevard at a cost of $3.6 million. This phase of the project is expected to be finished in October. According to Indian Riverkeeper Jim Moyer, preventing pollution from entering the waterways is more cost-effective than getting that out of the waterways afterwards. Because development contributes to water quality issues, there should be a balance between the county doing these kinds of projects and private property owners taking responsibility for their runoff. This includes prioritizing low-impact development that preserves open space, incorporates outside water retention, onsite water retention. Now, on the other side of the coin, it appears the new project slated for Rio is getting close to starting, with the old boatyard along Dixie Highway closed. Senior staff had some major changes to the building codes approved by this commission even before the developer made his formal presentation. The one that stood out to me was that he was able to get the river setbacks all but eliminated from his project, which will make Rio... eliminated from his project, which will make Rio one of the largest polluters along the St. Lucy River in Martin County. This is a good example of how our government is on both sides of the water war for clean water. Senior staff working for our big spenders on the commission do whatever it takes to get a development approved, yet we have some departments in the county government doing their part to clean our waterways. Luckily, we live in Martin County where money just grows on trees. What you permit, you promote. What you allow, you encourage. What you condone, you own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address us this morning during public comment, sir? When you're done, if you could fill out one of our request-to-speak forms. For the time being, if you could just state your name for the record, please.
My name's John Ross Trelli. I'd like to... First of all, Pastor, I'd like to commend you for what you did with your speech.
Sir, please just address us, but thank you.
So, a couple of things on the list that I have here that is bothering me. Cell phones while driving, increased traffic with overpopulation and overdevelopment, the boat ramp and parking down at Sansport Park. We got three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand people, I think it is, that came to Florida last year, something like that. You know, the parking down there at the one boat ramp that we have at Sansport, then you got Stewart Causeway and Jensen Causeway. It's very minimal for the amount of boats that are going through there. Another census for driving, maybe to be sent out as far as maybe people that pull up all the way to the next car so traffic doesn't get so packed. Not to be done rudely, same way you would do a normal census. Also pertaining back to the cell phones while driving. Respect in certain things being taught in school boards. That goes back with the mental health issue. Let's see. Arning certain places in Martin County. And that's pretty much it on the list. I don't really need to go any further.
I appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, no problem, man. I appreciate it. You guys take care.
Thanks. Have a good day. Anyone else looking to address us? No? Mr. Donaldson, since we're preparing presentations, informational presentations for our next meeting, can you take a couple of minutes at our next meeting to discuss the process of how things are put on the consent agenda specifically in regards to budget? And where that information is available for people to be seen?
Certainly.
I know that we hear there's a concern that somehow that's being slipped in. Just if you could spend a couple of minutes at our next meeting and explain exactly how that process works, who's involved in it, where that information is available for people that are interested in knowing. Thank you. With that, we will come back to commissioners, and we will start with you, Commissioner Hurd.
Yeah, we have had a lot of requests for golf course developments outside the urban service boundaries in the last year or so, and I think that it would be good... If we're going to allow or encourage these developments, then I think that we need to provide additional protections. There is no development that's more, a more hungry or thirsty consumer of nutrients and water than golf courses are, but they needn't be if we make sure that they're good neighbors, if we make sure that they're good, that they're sustainable. We need to require that if they're going, if we're going to allow the proliferation of golf courses displacing agriculture, then they need to plant native plants. They need to abide by our fertilizer bans. They need to be good neighbors. They need to be sustainable. And this isn't meant to be punitive. It's meant to be instructive. It's meant to be a model. If we require these kinds of things in golf courses outside the urban service boundary, these will be models for golf courses everywhere, all around the world. People will look to these as models for how to do golf course development sustainably. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
I didn't have nothing until just then. I think I agree with you.
Are there grasses that are sustainable for greens and for natives?
There are... No, not native grass, not putting turf.
Yeah.
No, but that is actually a pretty easy, whatever. The BMPs for new modern golf course construction is amazing of what it was thirty or forty years ago. And so, if we could add some of the actual BMPs that are being implemented today to our rules, I have no problem with that.
Great.
Yeah.
I'll address that when I get to my turn. Commissioner Heatherington?
I'm all set this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith? Thank you. Just to tag on to what my colleagues were mentioning, I think you'd be pleasantly surprised, Commissioner Hurd, that especially the level of golf courses that are being recommended for Martin County are, you know, BMP is best managed practice. They are right in that. You know, I have a history with golf, and I think the common misconception, or it wasn't a misconception back in the day, is that, yes, they pumped a ton of water onto courses, a ton of fertilizer and pesticides and whatever was easiest to achieve a maximum result. I think that the Professional Golfers Association, the USGA, the Golf Association, and the, I'm sure, Greens Keepers Association, plenty of associations, have been working towards that for a multitude of reasons. Water is scarce and expensive. The pesticides and fertilizers have been obviously proven to have a detrimental effect on the environment. They're also very expensive. So, best management practices have been put into place. The courses that we're discussing, especially the ones that run along the canal, any of them that have made presentations to us here, all talked about. The water that everyone is so fearful of, those discharges from the lake that come into the estuary that are nutrient-rich are perfect for golf courses. And the volume of water that is pushed out of the lake into our estuaries, a lot of that, not enough to make a dramatic difference, but every little bit helps, is going to be pumped out into those courses and used as a way to defer it and deter that water from getting into the estuary. The courses can use it. The nutrients and phosphates that are in that water that is so fearful and damaging for everything else in the proper strategy is beneficial to golf courses. And then the folks, finally, the folks that are designing those courses, I mean, not everyone's very familiar with world-renowned golf course architects, but the folks that are involved in these projects are world-renowned golf course architects and will build... I'm sure they've already heard about using as much native plants as possible, but a little reminder is not a bad idea at all. Perhaps our staff who's ever engaging, whether it's growth management or public works, can sort of reiterate this conversation that we had just now, and I know that that prompted Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I've talked to John Mail about this before. I think what would be helpful, because I think both our community as a whole, I remember we had a speaker come before us, gosh, a couple of years ago, and he praised you, Commissioner Campy, on your project out in Palm City on water quality. And there was, at that time, he said that it was a great project. He just wished there could be more. And I don't know if he knew or didn't know that there were some thirty-five, thirty-eight other projects that we had done in the last twenty years that were similar to what you had done out in Palm City. And I think that comes from a lack of information that we don't put out enough to our community. But I think on this golf course discussion, I think to your comments, I think I've talked to John about this before, that it would be great to do a presentation on exactly what are these courses doing relative to what you just said, the volume of water that's being taken out of the C-44 and run through a series of systems and then put into whether their own stormwater ponds or their own stormwater system on site, is remarkable what it's doing for us. And the amount of money that we would spend as a county building an equivalent stormwater retention area to hold that kind of volume of water, we wouldn't be able to afford.
Or have the land.
And do at the volume at which they're doing. And so, I think it would be great... There are a couple of new courses that are already built that are, as you said, world-renowned class engineered systems. But I think it would be helpful if John maybe came and elaborated on that as to really what it's doing for us that we're not having to pay for, quite frankly, and we're getting the direct benefit of what that looks like. And to the design and to the components of what these courses are using, at least the conversations I've had with some of them are remarkable, what they're doing and planning on doing. So, anyway, I think as each one comes forward, hopefully, they'll take the time, each course will take the time to explain what they are doing relative to all the questions that were raised. But I think John could be really instructive and helpful for us to set at least what that volume looks like, so maybe the public, all of us, have a better understanding.
Good suggestion. Mr. Donaldson, on your list of presentations that you're putting together, if you could add one, have Mr. Mail be the point person, but have him also reach out to a couple of established golf courses that already exist, to their greenskeeping staff, and also to anyone... There's several large projects in the pipeline, and have the opportunity, because like Commissioner Smith said, if you're not familiar with golf, if you're not familiar with high-end golf, which I assume most of us are not, it would be interesting. You drive past some of these places and don't even realize what is happening. And then to Commissioner Hurd's point about the fact that these are happening in our community, and for me personally, my opinion is, is that, you know, I think if someone had a thriving agricultural endeavor, farm, if you will, that's thriving and booming, they're perfectly content with that. A lot of what we're seeing here is the conversion of agricultural land to an assortment of different uses. I believe that either, and it's got a big price tag attached to it, conservation land purchased by a government entity is the least, you know, impact, you know, issue for agricultural land that's converting to the least detrimental would be conservation land, to me. The next least would be park, and sometimes you'd hope that conservation land and park, you know, passive park recreation could be hand in hand. And then, for me, it's golf. So, if you want to see sort of an easier path, a less expensive path, for how do we protect western Martin County green space, allow people to come in and create golf courses that are managed, to Commissioner Hurd's point, effectively and appropriately, that stays on the tax roll, actually increases to the tax roll, protects these lands. Some are open to the public, some are much more exclusive. So, I think that that's an interesting avenue for us protecting green open space that is the least expensive. Commissioner Smith, you get the final word.
A quick follow-on. You know, I think one of the courses, actually, two of the courses that are in Commissioner Jenkins' district, one is probably, at least in a straight line, is probably a mile and a half to maybe two miles away from the C-44, and directly takes water from C-44 and takes it into their system and cleans it, uses it, and then rehydrates the aquifer in that area. The other course that was expanding from a course that's been there for quite some time, from what I understand, is working on connecting water to move further south through what has traditionally not happened for decades. And at least as I understand, and Commissioner Jenkins has talked about this before, the opportunity to open up that system of connectivity to the western side of Hope Town is incredibly exciting, but not for those folks doing that course and spending the money and reconnecting pieces that haven't been connected for decades, we wouldn't do it. And so... I'm sorry?
So, we wouldn't have the ability to do it?
Well, ability or the funding to do it. It's a massive project that has some amazing benefits and some recent news that is not yet, you know, really relevant, but it is relevant. Will be some exciting stuff for water quality, for the loxahatchee and other things. So, anyway, I leave it there, but I think John could do a really good...
And we'll have him come back. Mr. Donaldson, anything from you?
John has a lot to do to perform in a few weeks.
He can do it. Ms. Woods?
He could do it today.
And when you're passionate about your job, it's not so trudery. Okay, with that, we will now take our first agenda item. Commissioner? Yes.
I did have a...
You yielded your time.
I did know that the question is...
That was your time.
Just real quick, we have a meeting scheduled for May thirtieth. It's the day after Memorial Day. It's one that we had relocated once. I do know that we have at least one commissioner that can't make it and was asking the possibility of just canceling that meeting, and we would just rearrange our schedules for that, and just wanted your concurrence on that before we move forward. So, if you all are in agreement?
As your chair, I will allow it.
Thank you, Mr. Benevolent.
That's why they call me the benevolent chair.
Yes, and I just, I'll reserve my remaining comments for the end of the meeting.
You need a motion to eliminate a meeting?
Yes, please.
So moved. May thirtieth.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to eliminate the May thirtieth Board of County Commissioners meeting from our calendar. It is the day after Memorial Day. I think it's appropriate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Let me announce our item. Our next item is going to be... Let's see where it appears.
It's right on your screen in front of you.
But I want to know what item it is. I know what it is. I want the actual... Say it again? Our next agenda item is R and B one. It is the Business Development Board of Martin County Annual Report. It will be presented by Mr. George Stokas and Ms. Joan Goodrich, who is with the BDB. It is a nine-thirty preset, so, you know, you're right in the window. And I appreciate it. I see you brought an illustrious group of who's who with you as your backup, so good for you. You are recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, George Stokas, Assistant County Minister. Every year, the Business Development Board of Martin County has requested and is required to provide a presentation to this body that outlines their work from the previous year, as well as providing a financial audit and the tax status of the organization. Next to me is Ms. Joan Goodrich. I believe you are the CEO. Is that correct?
Executive Director.
Executive Director. Well, swung and a miss on that one. And she'll be taking over the presentation.
Maybe that's a thing.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Donaldson, Ms. Woods, and thank you, Mr. Stokas. I am here representing your Business Development Board, here to give the annual briefing. Again, we are in place to help champion and strengthen Martin County's economy, and I'm so pleased to be joined today by a few of our board members, beginning with Mr. Eric Keen, who is president of our board. Also, joining us from the board is Dr. Ann Zaloni from Indian River State College, Tom Winningham, who represents the Marine Industry Association, Marshall Critchfield from Florida Power and Light. I also am so pleased to work alongside the professional team of Lynn Smith and Pierre Tashero, and I see that one of our founding partners, the Economic Council led by Ted Estolfi, is also here at the meeting, and want to thank all of our founding partners. We've been in place for thirty-two years, thanks to your vision to put the public-private partnership in place for economic development. As Mr. Stokas said, we have provided you with our fiscal year 2022 annual report. You did receive that, I believe, via email. It was another year of momentum for the BDB as we sought to improve job creation and bring direct business capital investment to Martin County. We assisted approximately seven-hundred-and-eighty-one businesses and residents last year. And by using the direct capital investment figure of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-point-seven million dollars that was made by five announcements, that it was a direct return on investment for every one dollar that you invested in this work of economic development through the Business Development Board, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars was returned. Again, from a financial overview point of view, our revenues last year were a little over five-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand dollars. Our expenses were five-hundred-and-sixty... Our expenses were $516,000 and change. Your investment of $450,000 represents 76% of our revenues during fiscal year 2022. 86% of the revenues are going to core business, with 14% going to general and administration. Again, our work continues to be around four pillars. Touting Martin County as good for business, fostering our hubs of excellence, our key industries here in Martin County that produce good jobs, continuing to grow our own businesses, entrepreneurs and talent, and then promoting strategic economic development areas that are ripe for job creators, innovators. As we tell Martin County's story for business, we are leaning into an economic development brand of distinctive by design. Martin County is well-known, especially in Florida, for the things that are important to us. So we have fun telling the fact that, yes, you know, Martin County is distinctive, we are special, and there's things that we care about. We also don't want to be anywhere USA, so the distinctive by design brand helps us tell that story. We're doing that through familiarization tours, VIP events, engaging with the industries around our hubs and telling and using local testimonials. In particular, this past fiscal year, we brought in teams from our state partners of Enterprise Florida, Florida Power and Light Office of Economic Development, to reorientate them in what Martin County, why Martin County is good for business. And that has been tremendous for our new lead flow and prospect activity. There is a video that we created. Unfortunately, the technology universe wasn't really working for me this morning, so I'll make sure that I send that link to you all, so you could see some of the storytelling that we're doing via video. From our hubs of excellence, again, I just want to remind you of what we're focusing in on. Aviation aerospace, marine, clean and green tech, agribusiness, equestrian, healthcare, medical, and IT are our hubs of excellence. In particular, during this past fiscal year, aviation, aerospace, and marine is where we've had a lot of activity going a little deeper. And as we prepare for our business planning for fiscal year 2024, there will be a third hub of excellence that we bring on to our business development radar. Right now, we've got a pipeline of 26 businesses that we're working with that are looking at Martin County in these hubs of, hubs areas that potentially could bring another $2 billion worth of capital investment to our community if we were to win every one. Again, just reminding you, our strategic economic development areas that we're focused in on, where our job creators, innovators, either lands or facilities that are being developed for these opportunities for us. Again, the Sunrise Grove Commerce Center, Martin Commerce Park, at the corner of I-95, number eight, which is our Foundry Commercial, that's currently under construction, over 900,000 square feet of new industrial space that will be ready here pretty shortly. And in addition, of course, our Sands Commerce Center continues to provide great business, great spaces for local businesses and new businesses to come into our area. We are also working on, oh, one of the areas that we're doing for Grow Our Own is our Pulse Program, where we've got a core of leaders and partners that are meeting one-on-one with Martin County businesses, listening to how business is going. And then there is also a series of questions that we ask them as to what they think about Martin County as a place for business. So we are now using some of this intelligence to go ahead and identify where opportunities are for us to collaborate with you and other partners in the community to improve our place for business. This list is some of those areas that have been identified by us through the Pulse Program as some of the areas we could work on to strengthen. Also, we asked a question as to what are some of those other things that if we were to add them to the economy that might build more vibrancy or business opportunities? So we also have a list of those. Again, the Pulse Report is something that we are going to publish each fall, following the visits that we make with, during that fiscal year. I think what was great in this first Pulse Report that we published for fiscal year 2022 was really benchmarking and baselining how our businesses felt about us as a place for business. And when we asked them the consistent question of, would you recommend Martin County as a place for business? 93% of those who answered the question said absolutely. So again, you know, I think high marks, which we don't often hear or appreciate what our business owners, entrepreneurs, and executives think of us as a place for business. So we look forward to monitoring that data point as we move forward. We've also, again, had some great progress that we've made as we've opened up our door to the community to get involved in this work of economic development, to become economic champions. And here's a slide that lists some of those entities from the private sector, the nonprofit sector, that have stepped forward and are joining the core of economic champions as we move forward. Now, why are these leaders engaging with us, really almost for the first time or in a long time in our history? Again, they sincerely want to help Martin County continue to strengthen its economy. They're looking to help solve the issues that we may have or the opportunities that we could go after. They're looking to gain industry insights. And again, you know, that recognition as an economic champion is something that they value. We've got three teams in place right now, growing that core of economic champions, our Partner Council. We're up to over 36 of our partners that meet quarterly. We also have a talent advancement team that we enacted last year, and that has grown to over 50. These are employers and educators, nonprofit HR executives, working on some of our talent needs with and in collaboration with our partners. Just this past few months, we activated our Corporate Council Team, which is going to own our Pulse Program, also help the professional team with some of our industry and our hub development. But what's needed, again, you know, it takes a whole community to support this work in strengthening our economy. We just don't know what might come in the future. So we certainly would value your participation, value the community's participation in spreading the word that Martin County is good for business. Again, you know, taking care of those that are our businesses that are already here, you know, shop local, support local, telling those stories of who's here. You know, many of our businesses have been here a very long time, and we just don't even know about them yet. So for those that give us permission to tell their story, we'd love to hear that. We've received referrals from your offices. We hope that you will continue to refer local businesses to us that need assistance. And we continue to look to grow the core of economic champions. What's coming up for us, and we hope that you will participate, in our first-ever aviation aerospace industry luncheon. We're doing that in collaboration with the Stewart Air Show, our Stewart Martin County Chamber of Commerce, that's on May 3rd. We're also, again, as I mentioned, working on our business plan, which we will provide to you by the end of May, as per our contract. We're also preparing for some work. You gave us a special project this year in looking at our job creation toolkit, seeing what, something that had gone in place nearly 12 years ago. You asked us to take a look at that, make some recommendations. So that's something that we'll be bringing forward in the summer to you. And then lastly, we see great value in foreign direct investment, helping local businesses take their products and services beyond Florida into global markets. So for the first time, we'll be hosting Export University 101 this year in September, and then we'll do 201, 301 master classes. We see a great opportunity for Martin County to be a center of that thought leadership around exporting. So that concludes, oh, and again, you know, we're here to help, and that concludes our annual briefing.
Don, if you don't mind bringing the.
And then, Mr. Chair, we're ready, and staff's prepared to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Questions for Ms. Goodrich from the Commission? We'll start with Commissioner Hurd.
Yeah, a chronic concern and complaint of mine is that you're too reliant upon Martin County taxpayers' revenue. 76% of your income is from Martin County taxpayers. It makes me wonder, why isn't the private sector supporting you? That contribution, the private contribution should be more than the public's contribution. And furthermore, 56% of Martin County's contribution is in salaries and benefits. If you add rent, it's 62%. So that means that 71% of Martin County's contribution is for salaries and rent, which seems excessive.
From an economic development point of view, this is a, you know, a services business, so that's where, you know, salaries and benefits will certainly be a bigger portion of the pie for enterprises or for expenses. But again, right now, 86% of our core business, our expenses are into core business.
Well, they're, 71% of Martin County's $450,000 annual contribution goes towards salaries, benefits, and rent. And why are the contributions from the private sector so lackluster?
Because we've just began to invite them to participate in this work, so we are going to spend more of that time in inviting them to participate. But we're pleased with what we've seen so far. Those that we've invited to participate are signing on.
What's your goal for next year for the private sector's support contribution?
So I will know that in a couple of weeks, once we look at our business plan for fiscal year 2024. I don't have that answer right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jenkins?
So as everybody knows, I'm the liaison for the Business Development Board with the help of George. And I gotta say, in defense, a few years ago, it was 100% was government contribution. There was no, hardly any. So we've come, we're getting there. I've got to say, again, I think I said something similar last year, where the Business Development Board was in 2000 and whenever I first became the liaison, to where we're at today is worlds apart. Lynn, I mean, Joan? And her small, mighty group of staff, Lynn and Pierre, have really, really turned it on and turned this into a professional organization that has attracted some serious talent to the Board. And we're making strides. I'm so proud of Joan and her staff. And to be honest with you, when I first sat on the Board, which I'm not a Board member, I'm just the liaison, I had my doubts. And Joan has really, really turned it around. And I'm impressed, and our community should thank you. Thanks.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Commissioner Jenkins stole my words. No, I was just going to say that I've, you know, the five years that I've been sitting here, I've seen a lot more private participation. I think there was, you know, zero. I wasn't sure if the number was zero, but there, I've seen a lot more private business participation, and I commend you for that. I think you're definitely making strides, and I do really like the distinctive by design brand.
I will go. I don't see any other additional lights. From the very beginning of my political career, the Business Development Board had been a bit of a punching bag. I remember back in 2006 and '07, one of the things that I had mentioned during my campaign as a small business owner and basically an outsider to the political process in Martin County, one thing that was very apparent was that Martin County was sadly, had a very, very strong and half-realistic reputation of being closed for business. I remember designing with my team a little, one of those old-fashioned, you'd turn on a door that would say, "Open." Yes, we're open, sorry, we're closed. And it was going to be open for business in Martin County, because that's the backbone. You know, I think it's obvious that every, all of our residents want and deserve the highest level of services that any government can give, probably more here than in other areas. And, but they want their taxes to be lower, and they don't want additional residential. So where is it going to happen? If there is a reputation, and I will also, as much as I would echo two of my colleagues' praise for you personally, Ms. Goodrich, and for the organization as it's matured, I would also say that of our staff, because you and your group of high-powered business leaders that have rotated through the years can only be as good as the reputation that our internal government allows you to have. If you or Mr. Astolfi with the Economic Council were to entice a business to come here from elsewhere, and all they do is hit a brick wall in growth management and public works and engineering, and from our staff in general, then you're climbing a mountain that can't be scaled. So I would also compliment our staff. I think they get it from the top, all the way through the process, understand that we're in the customer service or in the constituent service business. And when you talk to Commissioner Hurd's question about a majority of the money seems to be for payroll and personnel and things like that, well, what else could it be? You don't manufacture anything. You don't sell things other than the reputation of our community, just like us. You know, a majority of our payroll, fire rescue, is staff, is personnel. So I understand that. And to what my colleague said, that yes, I think in the past, the knock was, why is 100% of the money of the budget coming from the county? And even when it was 100%, I would tell you that that's an investment, and you showed a number there. It's an investment in the community. I mean, for half a million dollars approximately, give or take. And for a while, there was much more, and then it was scaled dramatically back, and it's crept around at, I think, is a reasonable number. For you to accomplish the level of success, and people say, well, the businesses would have come here anyway. No, that's not true for two reasons. One, I'm not diminishing at all your personal efforts and your team's efforts to go around and meet these people. I work for a small business owner. They want to hear from the Business Development Board. They want to know that there is a Business Development Board. As it is, as we have been small but mighty, you are north of Palm Beach County that is 10 times larger than us, 1.6 million residents to our 160,000. They have an economic development army down there. And then you head north to St. Lucie and Port St. Lucie, which has a national reputation for being open for business. And I use this example quite often, and I don't think it's the case anymore, but for quite a long time, there was a business in Palm City that rumor had, was looking to leave and go to St. Lucie, Port St. Lucie in particular. And I met with her, and I said, please, you know, for us, employing 150 people is a lot of people. And so she said to me, and this is many years ago, she said, they're rolling the red carpet out for us in St. Lucie County. And I said, well, I'm sad to tell you, we don't even own a red carpet. But that's starting to change, and I don't think that we necessarily have this beautiful red carpet that we can roll out with the toolkit and financial incentives that our neighbors to the north and south are looking to do. So it makes your job that much more challenging, and you've risen to that occasion, as far as I'm concerned. I was very pleased with your report. I think that, you know, I've always been a fan of economic development, having worked for small companies and very large companies. Without that, without what you and your team have done, and what I really liked about the photographs and the presentation is, it's a tremendous amount of young people involved in that. Because, you know, they're normally in positions where they can't leave their jobs. They're new or lower-level employees. But you have somehow been able to engage and recruit young people to this process. It sounds like a cliche to say that they're the future, but it's. It sounds like a cliche to say that they're the future, but it's, they are the future. And if you don't engage them now, and if they don't feel that they are participating and then responsible, and if it's controversial and if it's negative, they don't want to. And so you have been able to navigate through, I don't think the negative landscape, and Ted Estolfi can speak to it. He's got a long history here. I think that the government, the political body that we are, and the, and the community understands the value of what you're doing, and I appreciate your efforts.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think, queuing off a little bit of what Ed was just saying. What would be interesting to know from your visits and from your work with the businesses that are here and those that might be wanting to come here, when you come back in June, you said you're coming? When is the?
Later this summer.
Later this summer. It would be helpful, I think, to understand, or at least hear feedback relative to the red carpet discussion. What are there, what are our neighboring counties offering, and I say offering, what are they doing that's better than what we're doing? What are they, what policy-wise are their city councils or their county commissions saying, doing, working with them to make sure that if there's a, if there's a big project happening or going to happen, what involvement would it take from us as a county commission to help you, help them make that decision or make their thought process more enticing to be here? I think of one, and I think of Tom in the back of the room, and Tom, I'm gonna call you out for a second. You know, years ago, we talked about a marine trade route, which was purely infrastructure. And it was us, Martin County, needing to invest a lot of money in creating a route for our marine industries in the commerce area to be able to get to the water that is not as easily accessible as one might think. I don't know that we ever really made a lot of progress on that. And I, and I think about that a lot. I think, you know, if we, Martin County, take a more aggressive stance on something like that, the message that sends to others is that, hey, that is sort of the red carpet idea. Like, the county is willing to step out in front of an industry that, yeah, we, and it's in one of your top-listed things, aviation and marine industries. Fantastic. It's there. It's on, it's on the sheet. But have we done enough? Are we doing enough to make sure that we don't either lose or that we could recruit more? Because we're already good at it, but, but have we paid enough attention? Have we done enough? Have we made a statement enough that more would come, more would expand, more would do what Willis did, for instance? I mean, you know, as, what an amazing investment they have done. And that is a generational, both change and probably a 20-year commitment that they've made to Martin County relative to the rebranding, the re-footprint of that facility. But there are others that might do the same thing. If, if there was something specific to the industry, and I'm thinking infrastructure, things that we on the county side, both policy-wise and infrastructure-wise, would do or could do or could support, that would further send a much clearer message that we absolutely want to do everything possible to keep that industry sector or that group moving forward. And it shouldn't just be, in my way of thinking, necessarily, you know, a development order. That, you know, what could we do in a development order that allows a Willis to grow more that they came before us two months ago to do what they're, they're doing? So it would be helpful, I think, to hear back from you all. What are you hearing from the community? And from those industries that are wanting to locate here or be already here, but would make their industry more robust if we had a policy issue that we hadn't dealt with or had just kind of pushed down the road some that we could take on? And that jobs tool, jobs creation toolkit was a perfect, for instance, of that years ago. We also did a small business bill of rights years ago that was, was looking at small business. What could we do by policy that small business, Ed's business, anybody else's business?
I worked there.
Would, would, would benefit from merely by some policy changes that, yeah, they've been inherent to our plan for a long time. I remember one that I used as a model for that, and it was a parking issue. And it was a parking calculation for a small business that couldn't grow, couldn't do anything with their footprint because they were limited by the amount of parking spaces they could have. And we fixed that and addressed that in that small business change that we did. And so those kind of ideas would be helpful to know from you all. What are you hearing from people that we need to be either more aggressive on, or our policy needs some tweaking? Is there something out of Tallahassee we need that we're not doing legislatively, funding-wise, whatever that may be, so that we can be more on board with helping businesses either grow, come, or certainly, as Ed used in his example, stay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from my colleagues? Anything else, Ms. Goodrich, Mr. Stokus? Any of your team would like to say anything? I appreciate all of you taking the time out of your busy days to stay with us until your 9:30 preset, which is just, you know, now 10:20.
On behalf of Mr. Keen, our president of the board, our board, our, our team, investors and partners, we just thank you for this privilege of doing this work on your behalf and for our community.
Thank you. We, I personally return the praise and appreciation to you. With that, that's the end of this presentation. We'll take our 10-minute closed captioning break now, and we will return at 10:51.
Thank you. Okay, we are back from our mid-morning closed captioning break. It's April 18th, 2023. We're continuing with our Board of County Commissioners meeting. Our next agenda item is public hearing number one, a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment CPA 22-08, water supply plan. It will be presented by Ms. Samantha Lovelady with some assistance. Ms. Lovelady, good morning. You are recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Samantha Lovelady, Principal Planner with the Growth Management Department. I have Ann Murray with me, the county's hydrogeologist with the Utilities Department. And we are presenting the 2021 Water Supply Plan. The South Florida Water Management District prepares water supply plans for each of its four planning areas to support planning initiatives and address local issues. The regional water supply plans encompass a 20-year future planning horizon and are updated every five years. All local governments within each planning area are required by statute to update their 10-year water supply facilities work plan to identify specific water supply projects that meet future demand. Local governments must adopt revisions to the comprehensive plans within 18 months following the approval of the plan update. Martin County is part of the South Florida Water Management District's Upper East Coast Water Supply Plan. On November 10th of 2021, the South Florida Water Management District adopted the 2021 Upper East Coast Water Supply Plan update. Therefore, revisions to Martin County's comprehensive growth management plan must be adopted by May 10 of this year. On October 11th, 2022, the Board adopted Resolution 11-10.2 to initiate this comprehensive plan amendment. On February 16th, the LPA voted three to one to recommend approval of CPA 2208. On February 21st, the Board voted to transmit the amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. The state reviewing agencies reviewed the amendment and the South Florida Water Management District had various comments. Included in your packets are the district's comments and how the county has responded to those comments. The county has worked with the district to make changes to Chapter 11 to address these concerns. A revised Chapter 11 was submitted to the Board via supplemental memo. Changes since transmitted are shown highlighted in yellow. I can go over these changes with you or answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, staff recommends a motion to adopt CPA 22-08 Water Supply Plan.
We'll start with Commissioner Hurd.
I'm just curious. I'm looking at the different municipalities, gallons per day. How are those calculated? Because they're all over the place. Indian Town is 86 gallons per day. The Questa is 201. I mean, why are, how are these arrived at? And how do you make the determination?
Right. So the, is this on? Okay. So it's based on population and it's based on the amount of water used. So it's just a simple calculation, division. So that's how we derive how much water is being used per capita.
And South Florida Water Management District doesn't give any guidelines to any municipalities?
Oh, absolutely. They're included in the South Florida Water Management District's applicants handbook, and each one of these facets within the plan are outlined, within a consumptive use permitting is outlined, and how to calculate and how to guide those calculations.
There's some thirsty municipalities. Thanks.
And the tables in the chapter are provided by the Upper East Coast Water Supply Plan. So we took those straight out of their plan into ours.
I don't quibble with the numbers. I think that they're, I assume that they're accurate. They're just so, so varied.
I think it has a lot to do with probably water conservation.
Irrigation, I guess.
Yep. Irrigation's a big part of it.
Because I look at some of the ones south where I know that the landscaping is real lush and their consumptive consumption is huge.
Right. And because there's a difference. If you are using, if you're sourcing water that is coming to you not only for drinking water but for irrigation water as well, that's different than having a well and accounting for that differently.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for colleagues? Seeing none, anyone from the public looking to address us on this topic? Commissioner Smith?
With staff's recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith for staff's recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
These are massive. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I'd also like to thank Ann for all of her hard work on this.
Ann, thank you. Duly recognized. Thank you. Our next agenda item is public hearing quasi-judicial number one, a request for a zoning district change by Sands Commercial Center, LSC S 129-026. It'll be presented by Ms. Allison Roizek. And since it's quasi-judicial, I have to ask some questions of my colleagues if they've had any ex parte communications. Commissioner Hurd?
If I have any, they've been filed.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
If I have any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Heatherington?
If any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Smith?
If I have them, they're filed.
Yes, if I have any, they've been filed. Are there any intervenors?
There are no interveners.
Ms. Roizek, would you hand in your work history and a copy of the agenda item, please?
I can bring it.
Okay. We'll make sure that gets onto the record.
Okay. We will supplement the record during the public hearing to bring the work history.
Thank you. I see someone going to get it for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
My pleasure. Anyone that will be offering any testimony, if you would please rise to be sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm the evidence that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Um, seems like it. Oh, do you have any notices, public notices to submit?
All of the notices were turned in at the LPA hearing.
Thank you very much. And with that, you are recognized to begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Campy and County Commissioners. Thank you and the members of the public here today for your time to hear this agenda item before us. My name is Allison Roizek. I'm a Principal Planner in the Growth Management Department and the county's project coordinator for the Sands Commerce rezoning. A copy of my work history and the agenda item will be submitted during the public hearing. I'm here to present the application for the Sands Commerce mandatory rezoning. The property owner is Sands Commerce LLC, and the agent for the project is Thomas Sawyer from Gunster, Yoclee, and Stewart, who is here with us today. The Sands Commerce Center site is located east of the Turnpike, just west of High Meadows Avenue, within the primary urban service district in Palm City. The site is approximately 36.6 acres, consisting of vacant industrial property. The property has an industrial future land use designation which includes a range of industrial uses, including those with limited and extensive impacts. The site's current zoning designation is category C, A1 Small Farms District, which is inconsistent with the site's industrial land use, making this a mandatory rezoning. The request is to rezone to a category A industrial zoning district, of which we have three. The requested limited industrial category has the least intense uses of all three industrial zoning categories. You may wonder why this request is mandatory. Category C districts were adopted in 1967, prior to our comprehensive plan, creating inconsistencies between future land uses and zoning designations for various properties. The Sands Commerce Center is one of these properties. The three industrial zoning districts that you can choose from today include limited industrial, general industrial, heavy industrial, and a fourth option available is a rezoning the property to a planned unit development. In the permitted use table from Article III of our Land Development Regulations, the limited industrial category allows the least intensive uses. For example, mining, salvage yards, and yard trash processing are not permitted in the limited industrial category. On the flip side, the limited industrial category allows more commercial uses to serve the surrounding area. For example, limited industrial permits general retail sales, services, and restaurants. Also, the limited industrial category uses the least amount of land because it has the least amount of setbacks. The Martin County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations require various factors to be considered when deciding on a change in zoning. When considering these factors, staff concluded the requested limited industrial zoning designation is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the LDRs. The location criteria for rezoning has been met with the site being located between two major thoroughfares. major thoroughfares. The site is compatible with the parcels to the north and to the south, which have the same industrial land use and ally zoning designations. The development is located within the primary urban service boundary promoting orderly growth, and the area development pattern is well established, and the site will serve its commercial needs of the surrounding properties. Staff found that the proposed mandatory rezoning is in compliance with the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and all relevant land development regulations. The LPA was presented with a rezoning request on April 6th, recommended unanimously that the Board approve such request. Today, we're recommending that the Board, one, move to receive and file the agenda item and its attachments, including the staff report as Exhibit 1, move to approve the mandatory rezoning of the Sands Commerce Center to Category A Limited Industrial, and move to adopt the resolution approving the request to rezone of the 36.62 acre property from Category C-A1 Small Farms District to Category A Limited Industrial. That concludes my presentation today, but I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff from the commission? Seeing none at this time. Mr. Sawyer, it's your opportunity to present on behalf of the applicant.
For the record, it's Tom Sawyer with the Gunster Firm. I did not see the posting of my affidavit of mailing, so I'd like to submit it again.
Glad to have it. The record will reflect that.
And the staff report's hard to comment on. It's perfect. There's not a whole lot to say. We're looking for consistency here with the future land use plan, and light or limited industrial is your least intensive. So, really, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer, but stole my thunder.
Well, that's the thunder you were looking for, so. Questions for the applicants representative from the commission? Seeing none. Any members of the public looking to address us on this topic? Also seeing none. Excuse me, we start with the?
Just for a matter of procedure, Elise Elder, Deputy County Attorney, we can't close out this public hearing until we have the work history provided during the public hearing, so I just want to point that out if we need to take a short recess or?
I thought someone was working on that.
Is this it? Okay.
And a copy of?
I'm going to have Allison look at that just to make sure it's the proper work history so it can be submitted. Perfect.
And a copy of the work of the agenda item as well?
I believe Paul has a copy of the agenda item right there.
Let the record reflect that the work history and a copy of the agenda item has been submitted, and it'll come back to you, Commissioner Smith.
We have staff's recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Before we get to the vote, I would just like to say, as the District Five Representative, Sands Industrial Park, historically, everything that's existed thus far is in Palm City. I just wanted to say that whether it was Mr. Sands, the father, or now the son, and I believe the grandson, it's a multi-generational family enterprise. Sands Industrial Park and the properties that they own have done a remarkable job of boosting our economic development in Martin County quietly, professionally, really first-rate operations. So, as they continue to invest in the community, I just wanted to share on behalf of the Board our appreciation. They employ thousands of people, and they run a first-rate operation, both the buildings, the infrastructure, and how they participate in our community. So, I'm glad that they have continued to support us and invest in Martin County. So, with that, we have a motion for staff's recommendation of approval from Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sawyer, please go back and tell your clients we're very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Departmental Number One, Office of Management and Budget Items Which Require Board Approval. There are six of them, and they will be presented by Ms. Jennifer Manning. Ms. Manning, good morning. You are recognized.
Good morning, Commissioner. Jennifer Manning, OMB Director. The first item on the agenda is permission to apply for the FY 2020 Federal Transit Administration Section 5339 Bus and Bus Facility Grant. This is to purchase a light-duty, midsize, mixed-route bus, and that they're expecting to receive, hopefully, $128,907, which will help to offset the cost of the purchase. Item number two, the sheriff is requesting permission to apply for the State Criminal Alien Assistant Program Grant. This is funding that will be, the amount of the funding will be approved, will be noted when it's approved, and this is to help offset the cost for incarcerated undocumented criminal Item number three is permission to accept the supplemental grant agreement through FDOT, which is Florida Department of Transportation, for the construction, milling and resurfacing, and construction engineering and inspection of Calhoun Road A1A Southeast Dixie Highway from Southeast Monterey to Southeast Fifth Street. This additional funding is $261,878, and this will increase the project cost of 1.1 million.
Sororly needed project. Sororly needed.
Sororly needed, yes. Item number four is permission to accept the Resilient Florida Program Implementation Grant, and this is for the Indian, sorry, Indian Riverside State Living Shoreline Phase, Project Phase Two. This is a grant award for 1.8 million dollars, roughly 1.9, and the total project cost is 3.7 million dollars. There is a request for grant funding through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the matching dollars, and if that matching dollars is not successfully acquired, then the Coastal Capital Fund will make up the difference. Item number five is permission to accept the Florida Inland Navigation District funding for derelict vessel. The award is $31,492, and this just helps to offset the cost of removing derelict vessels. Final item is requests from our IT Department. They're requesting $14,805 to repair fiber optic lines that was damaged by the contractor, and this funding will come from the, it comes out of the, so, the Community Broadband Reserve Funds, and eventually will be reimbursed through, you know, insurance.
One question, please. Commissioner Smith?
Don, who oversees or who manages derelict vessels these days?
So, it comes under the Building Department, is dealing with the derelict vessels, and they coordinate with the sheriff. It's quite an involved process, actually, before a vessel is actually determined derelict, but it's, you know, Larry Massing actually started it some years ago, and it continues to stay within the Building Department.
So, I think another thing to add to your list, if the commission's okay with that, I think with both the Jensen Beach mooring field and Sarah's mooring field happening in Salerno, I think it'd be good to get sort of a 10-year review of what we were spending, how many derelict vessels we were hauling out prior to having our managed mooring fields. I think it would be helpful to understand as a result of doing all that work, the success that we're having relative to not having to do as much as we did in the past, and certainly the amount of damage that was done in Jensen as a result of not having the mooring field. So, if that's something you could come back with, and if it's Jeff that does that update, or if it's still the Building Department, that's great, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation.
Ms. Manning, thank you so much. Questions for Ms. Manning? He's going to make the motion. Move approval.
Second.
Trying to figure out, that was right at the wire finish there for the second. I will make my determination. We have a motion for, by Commissioner Smith for staff's recommendation as presented, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning, thank you so much. Our next agenda item is Departmental Number Two, Contracts That Meet the Threshold for Board Approval of $1 Million or Greater. There are three items that'll be presented this morning by Ms. Kristi Brotherton from Palm City. You are recognized.
Good morning, Kristi Brotherton, Chief Procurement Officer. We have three items for your consideration today. The first is a continuing services contract for medical supplies for emergency management services. This contract has a not-to-exceed value of 1.5 million dollars with a maximum not-to-exceed term of five years. Staff is recommending that the Board award the contract to Boundtree Medical LLC and Henry Schein, Schein Incorporated, and move that the Board authorize the county administrator designate to execute all documents related to this request. Next, we have a continuing services contract for aerial mosquito spraying. This contract has a not-to-exceed value of 1.5 million dollars with a not-to-exceed term of five years. And staff is recommending that the Board award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Clark Environmental Mosquito Management, and move that the Board authorize the county administrator designate to execute all documents related to this request. And last, we have a continuing services contract for roadway resurfacing with a maximum not-to-exceed contract value of 25 million dollars with a maximum not-to-exceed term of five years. And staff recommends that the Board award the contract to the two lowest responsive and responsible bidders, JW Cheetum and Sunshine Land Design, and move that the Board authorize the county administrator designate to execute all documents related to this request. And that concludes this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, just an observation. Our mosquito control department does a really, really good job of eliminating mosquitoes and efficiently and cost-effectively, too. And because we've had rains, I know that we're going to get requests for spraying, and there were requests from Rocky Point residents a couple weeks ago when there was an inundation of mosquitoes in Rocky Point. And what people may not understand is that there are mosquito traps that trap and count overnight the number of mosquitoes present, and if the count goes over the threshold, then spraying is allowed, and otherwise, it's not. So, it's just, it's a really efficient way and effective way to control mosquitoes. It's nice to know that there's a mathematic formula for eliminating mosquitoes.
Very exciting. Commissioner Jenkins?
So, I had the opportunity to actually engage with our mosquito control person, Roxanne, and she's amazingly knowledgeable, and I actually learned something that I thought I would share. Noseums, we can't control. So, if you're getting eaten by noseums, no matter how much, unless we douse the whole county with a unhealthy amount of chemicals, we cannot control them. So, I, you know, and I've been dealing with that. That's kind of my, in my wheelhouse, and I learned something, so I thought I would share it, so, anyway.
They seem to like soap, or they seem to like perfume.
Yeah.
Because my wife is constantly eaten up by noseums, and they never seem to bother me.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is, but they only get my ankles for some reason, anyway.
Do we have anybody from staff that can give us some information on?
Noseums.
Not on noseums necessarily. I never see them. But how residents can, you know, Commissioner Hurd gave us a little advice on how you process it. What should residents do as we enter into the mosquito season? And do you have anybody with you, Mr. Gordon?
Jim Gordon, Public Works Director. So, the first thing residents should do, the easiest way to get in touch with us is the Request for Service System, which is an online system where they can request that we go out. What happens when they make that request is we have mosquito control technicians that'll go out and actually investigate in their area and look for areas where mosquitoes might be breeding. And then we can treat the mosquitoes before they become mosquitoes, or if there are already, a lot of them present, we'll do a count and then figure out that we need to do a spray. So, there's many options that we have available, and the contract that was just up was for aerial spraying, which is the most expensive way to take care of it, but that when you need to cover large areas, that's what you have to do. So, when you get out into the Palm City Farms area or some of the island areas that there aren't roads to, when it's kind of a salt marsh, that's when we put up one of those helicopters, or now we have drones that we can use as well. But online is the very easiest way. Otherwise, you can call the mosquito control hotline, which I don't have the number with me.
One need, George, do I have the number?
I finally figured out how you do an RFS, a Request for Service.
It's a little easier for you.
On our, no, it's not, because I'm digitally inept, but.
I didn't mean you personally.
Literally, just go to our landing page of our website. It's on the very top, Request for Service. Click on it. It's a very easy form to fill out.
You could also use the app. They connect.
Yeah, that's way beyond.
Yeah, this spoon feed.
I had a question. So, do we only cover the unincorporated area, or if you fall within the boundaries of City of Stewart, do we have mosquito control in the City of Stewart?
Mosquito control is countywide.
Oh, good. Good to know. I have a bunch of.
Question that I hear from my constituents when they see the Buzz truck coming through, the puffer truck, what's the level of, you do it in the evening, preferably when people aren't out on the streets or whatever, but that's, give us a little update on the safety issue of the?
So, we'd prefer that you go inside. If you see a fog truck, you could be out there, but it's not recommended that you be in that. It is a chemical that's being sprayed to kill mosquitoes, so it'd be better to be inside. And it's, they spray at night because that's when the mosquitoes are out. So, you know, it's the most effective in the kind of twilight till about midnight timeframe. So, that's when they target that, those areas.
Excellent.
But if I recall, it's less than a quarter ounce per acre.
It is.
So, it's a very tiny, that's the reason why that equipment's expensive, to disperse it in just the most tiniest amount necessary.
Yeah, that's our goal, is to use the very least that we can.
I was going to say, quarter ounce per acre, I would have to see some back.
Can't help it.
I'd be riding my bike in 1968, falling apart.
Well, Commissioner Hurd did have the lead in that there was math involved in this, right? So, I couldn't help it.
And I think you all just missed that, but Harold said he used to tag on or ride it.
No, he would ride his bike behind.
Right behind it, yeah. Little DDT.
Commissioner Hurd said the same thing, so.
That's why I'm so resilient.
That's one way of looking at it. All of the pieces. As a child, I never chased after the truck that was spraying toxic chemicals.
I was the ice cream man.
Mr. Gordon, I appreciate that very much. I had a question on the first item, which was the fire rescue supplies. Well, these guys are distressed, they've got to bring it up.
He's looking pretty sharp.
Chad, too. Here he goes.
This might be out of your pay grade, you better bring the chief in as well.
That's because he was working as John Deere this weekend.
My question is, is that we see, what level of, what products is this? It's not medicine, correct? It's not pharmaceuticals, or is it everything?
No, this is, Matt Rush, Fire Rescue Administrator, for the record. This is just for the soft goods, so your bandages, your needles, your, everything that they use to administer the pharmaceuticals, but not the pharmaceuticals themselves.
We're seeing a tremendous increase across the board with nearly everything. Are you seeing the same thing here as well, and is there any kind of regulations that keep this sort of price regulated, or is this just market price?
No, it's market price, unfortunately, like everyone is kind of feeling the same pain with that. Typically, we see about a 15% increase annually, but now it's 25, 30. Depends on the item. Some are higher than others and the manufacturer of those items.
And is it, do you buy it through a distributor or supplier, or are you guys out there like, you know, price comparing? And I know you're good at this, so what's the strategy? Does the chief have anything to opine?
I don't think so. Oh, well, that's why we engage the strategy of putting out to bid.
Chief, what's your philosophy on trying to combat the increase in supplies?
For the record, Chad Chantilly, Fire Chief, Martin County Fire Rescue. My methodology is Matt Rush. So, it doesn't get any better than this. So, he does a phenomenal job, and he really, he shops, you know, our products that we use, and he's been efficient over the years, and he's been tried and tested for a long time, and there's no beating this guy.
And we have a no compete where he can't go anywhere else, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. More questions? Commissioner Hurd?
This is slightly off-topic, but how much has your consumption of Narcan increased in the last couple of years? And also, is there anything that combats trank?
Well, I'll answer the first part. I'll have to give you the second part of that question. As far as Narcan consumption is concerned, we actually have a grant that we use. It's called the HEROES Grant, so we actually don't even pay for Narcan. It's called the HEROES Grant, so we actually don't even pay for Narcan. I get approximately 350 to 400 doses for free every year, and that gets us through about 12 to 14 months. So it's been about four years since we've had to pay for it, which is nice, because it's, it's not a cheap medication by any means. It's an amazing medication, but that saves us about $10,000 per year.
Great.
For those that don't know what Narcan is, do you want to take that one?
So Narcan, and it is kind of a misnomer out there, what Narcan actually does. So Narcan does not reverse the effects of opiates, it actually blocks the effects of opiates. So the thing with Narcan is, depending on how much the individual has ingested, they have to keep the maintenance of Narcan to keep those effects from keeping them in that deep state of what they are, but the opiates, it causes them to go into respiratory arrest. The Narcan, we give them enough to where they actually can breathe on their own, but depending on how much of the drug is there, how long it takes them to actually get it through their system, that's where, as far as the amount of Narcan, it's just dependent upon how much they ingested.
Residents can come and request a dosage of Narcan that they can have for themselves to administer as they see needed, correct? Isn't there a program that, I know there is?
That, that's not a program through fire rescue. That may be through DOH, or I'm sure law enforcement may have something to do with that, but that's not through law.
I think if the, thank you, I think the Health Department, Martin County, the State Health Department located in Martin County does have the ability to administer, hand out Narcan dosages that residents can keep and use if they need be. You can reach out to our Health Department in Martin County.
That's just for, that's just for an emergency.
Correct. Yeah, it's not, it's not like you're going to use it for yourself, but...
And just to clarify, because I want to make sure that someone doesn't think one dose of Narcan and they're cured. If they utilize Narcan, they need to call 911.
Correct. No, I think that's all part of it. It wasn't like, hey, you're doing it at home and you don't have to call anybody, but I know that it is available for like that immediate kind of situation.
Not maintenance.
Not maintenance. Gentlemen?
My Getz watch, my Getz smartwatch just asked me a question. Does Narcan expire? It does, like any other?
Like, like all pharmaceuticals, they typically have a shelf life of anywhere to two to three years.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for our members of fire rescue?
How about Trank? You're seeing a, a more usage of that in the community?
Commissioner Hurd's up on all the street drugs. I've never heard of Trank.
You know, Commissioner, to be honest with you, I can't answer that question, because I'm not even sure what you're referring to in regards to Trank. If you're talking to different types of opiates or...
Animal tranquilizer that's, that's being seen in, among drug abusers, drug addicts these days, and it's Nar, it's Narcan can't combat it, and I don't know that anything can.
So Narcan is only for opiate-based, and it sounds like what you're talking about is not opiate-based.
It's not. Yeah, it's, it's one of the new street drugs of choice, and it's really fatal.
So our, our public service announcement would be, do not use Trank.
Correct. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Ms. Brotherton, I had a question on the paving.
Sure. It's the longest agenda item you've had, no? Lot of interaction.
Any questions this season? It's your day.
Oh, come on down, Mr. Zama.
I see that it's 25 million over five years, and is that a countywide, and does that fall into what the CIP sheets would show for projects that are already in the pipeline? If, I'm sure all of us are getting calls from constituents always looking for roads to be resurfaced, remilled, re, what can you say?
George Zama, Public Works Deputy Director. Yes, this is for countywide resurfacing. It's also for guardrail replacement and maintenance and other ancillary work within the road right-of-way that's tied to the roadways itself, particularly drainage. So it's not just the actual resurfacing, so it's a lot of just our all-encompass maintenance projects. A lot of our isolated projects, I feel like we do a pretty comprehensive job of programming individual projects and neighborhood restoration projects. So this is really more of the isolated maintenance work.
Okay.
I do want to point out, this particular contract is continuing services, so it is regulated by statute. We cannot exceed $300,000 per work order, so this is for your smaller projects, maintenance projects that may come up. Anything that exceeds 300,000 would be formally bid and will be referenced in your CIP.
That's good to know. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Is the 300,000 state or county?
It's state.
And have they looked at that recently? Because I know that question comes up from time to time relative to the amount, because 300,000, and I know this isn't going to sound right, but 300,000 gets consumed really quickly in a bid.
It was just recently, within the past couple of years, increased from 200,000 up to 300,000. So they're slowly starting to increase. I haven't heard anything about them increasing again, but the way that the, the market is going with pricing.
Just what Chad was talking about, if you're seeing 30% or 25% increases and stuff, a bid that would have been 200,000 five years ago would be a half a million today.
Yes.
Yeah, just for reference, two years ago, simply resurfacing a road, milling or grinding the existing asphalt, and repaving to the same thickness was about 125,000 a mile. Now we're almost at 200.
And I bet it doesn't go back down.
It does not go back down.
Any other questions for Mr. Zama? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to you, Ms. Brotherton. Anyone from the public looking to address us on this topic, agenda item? Are you standing up to address us? Please come forward. Please state your name for the record, and then afterwards you can fill out one of the requests to speak for.
Kail Goldie. I'm not sure if this is the right issue, but this, if I'm not correct, just correct me. Is this for all the different budget issues that are on here? You're looking at all of these different budget groupings?
Just not, not the, not the CIP sheet that's coming up, the different departments, is that what you're speaking of?
I guess, because what I'm interested in is, I saw that there was a, a budget issue for purchasing, I guess it was medical supplies.
Correct, that's this item.
That's this item.
That's why we were asking the chief and his financial person.
Okay, so that was for that, okay. So I'm just curious, I saw on the, it was very brief that I got an opportunity to see it, but I saw that Henry Sheen was listed on there? And my question, my, my question would be to the people who reviewed that and picked Henry Sheen, is he to be the supplier? Is that what I'm correct in assuming?
One of them.
It's a dual award to Boundary and Henry Sheen.
Okay.
I think it's Sheen.
Sheen.
Henry Sheen.
Okay, Henry Sheen. Well, I just wanted to make sure that they were aware that Henry Sheen agreed to pay 1.1 million for allegedly violating the Civil Monetary Penalties Law by, by providing improper remuneration to customers in the form of points redeemable for products and services. He has quite a history of violations, so I think just, you know, make sure that, you know, that's reviewed before he's agreed to be a supplier, would be my request.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Ms. Brotherton's in charge of purchasing. She will take a look at that. And I don't think it's actually Mr. Sheen. I am familiar with the company, not to the level that you are, Ms. Goldie, but when I was growing up in New York, they were a company that was in New York as well, and I think Henry Sheen's probably 300 years old now, but, but the company itself, that's interesting to look into. Commissioner Smith?
There were no public, further public comments?
Any other public comments? Seeing none? Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to accept staff's recommendation as presented, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for your work and for the folks that came to offer ancillary information. At this point, it is now 11:44. What I'd like to do is, we, our next agenda item is workshop number one, review the fiscal year 2024 Tentative Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. We're just coming up on the lunch break now, so what we'll do is we'll take a 12 o'clock lunch break and return at 1:30 to take on this agenda item, workshop number one. If you have public comments for the end of the meeting, we would take those after the workshop, and so because of that, we will see you all at 1:30. Thank you very much.